Good evening and welcome to the June 21st, 2023, meeting of the City of Summit Zoning Board of Adjustment. My name is Stephen Spurr and I am Chairman of the Summit Zoning Board. In accordance with New Jersey Statute 10:4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to a newspaper of record and has been posted here in City Hall. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and a quorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For the benefit of the interested public, this meeting is being livestreamed to the city's YouTube page and also broadcast to Summit's government channel, which is Comcast's Channel 34 and Verizon Channel 30. Please note that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room where you entered. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system here at the dais and return it after our meeting. Andy Ball is the zoning board's attorney. He will advise board members on matters of law and is the key interface with an applicant's attorney. Mr. Ball does not vote on the applications. Stephanie Suleos is a city employee and the zoning board secretary. Ms. Suleos assists applicants with preparation of their applications, planning our agendas and keeping our meeting minutes. Ms. Suleos does not vote on the applications. Our board consists of seven regular members and up to four alternates. All members can participate in the hearings tonight, but a maximum of seven can vote. Most applications require a simple majority to be approved. Some applications require five affirmative votes to be approved. You will be told which majority will be required before we begin our deliberations. Ms. Suleos, who please call the role of the members.
Sure. Chairman Spurr?
Here.
Vice Chairman Steiner is excused this evening. Ms. Knoll?
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Here.
Mr. Mullen is excused this evening. Mr. Malley is also excused. Mr. Loykets?
Here.
Ms. Toad?
Here.
Ms. Sager is excused. Mr. Feskins?
Here.
Mr. Uco?
Here.
You have a quorum. You may proceed.
Excellent. We generally hear the applications in the order they are listed on the agenda. We try to have each hearing last no more than 30 minutes, but we do understand that some applications are too complex to be heard within that timeframe. Each hearing begins with the applicant or their attorney giving an overview of the application and the variances that are required. We then hear from any expert witnesses the applicant may have to help explain the application and why the variances are needed. Board members may ask questions of the applicant, their attorney, and the expert witnesses. Once the board professionals and board members have completed their questioning, the public will have an opportunity to ask questions of their own. This is not the time to tell us what you think about this application. That opportunity comes at the end of the hearing. Before you ask your questions, please clearly state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address. It is important that our court reporter be able to keep a clear and accurate public record. Court reporting is done through the audiovisual system, so speak directly into the microphone if you can. After all witnesses have been heard, members of the interested public have their second opportunity to speak, and at that time you may express your opinion positive or negative about the application. Then the public hearing is closed and we enter into executive session where board members discuss the application and vote. You will be able to listen to our executive session, but you will not normally be able to participate in our discussion. Most applications are heard and decided in the same evening. If an application requires additional information or testimony that cannot be presented tonight, we will carry your application to another date and it will not be decided during this meeting. Krista Anderson, the city zoning officer, has asked that I remind all applicants that they must carefully read the resolution and documents that documents the zoning board's decision to pay particular attention to the conditions contained in the resolution. For example, if a landscaping plan is required, you must obtain one and submit it to John Linton, the city's forester. If a grading plan is required, you must have one prepared by a civil engineer and submit three copies along with the application fee to the city's engineering division. Failure to satisfy all conditions in the resolution will result in a delay in approving your application as it will necessitate additional follow-up from zoning and other city staff. The resolutions documenting the board's decision will normally be available one month after we decide the application. Before we move to the public hearings, if you'll please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. All right. We have four applications this evening. What we'll do first before we actually hear the applications is just run quickly through and ask a representative from each application to come forward and just quickly give us a sense of the application before us. First, we'll hear 246 Summit Avenue. Richard or Susan with us tonight? Hello? Would you mind just coming up to the podium real quick? Just two quick questions for you. Do you have any expert witnesses with you this evening?
I do.
Okay. You are an architect, I presume?
Yes.
All right. And then you think you can complete the application in 30 minutes?
Yes.
All right. Good answers all around. Grab a seat, pack, and we'll get to you just in a moment. All right. Next, we'll hear 58 Dale Drive. Alexandra or Jason?
I'm Anthony Delisandro. On behalf of the applicants.
Okay. And you have any expert witnesses?
Yes, as we do with a civil engineer.
Civil engineer. Okay. And 30 minutes?
Yes.
All right. Good answer. Thank you very much. Next, we'll hear 19 Manor Hill Road. Amanda or Michael?
I'm Amanda Kriegen.
Hi, Amanda. Do you have any expert witnesses with you this evening?
I'm an architect.
Architect. Great. 30 minutes. Sound about right?
Yes.
Excellent. All right. And then last but not least, 28 Druid Hill. Stephen or Caitlin?
Yes, Stephen.
Hello, Stephen. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Another Stephen for you. How about you? I see an architect.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else joining with you this evening?
No, just myself.
All right. Excellent.
Thank you.
Hang in there for us. All right. Back to the top of the order, unless there's something sneaking behind me. Nope. Let's hear from 246 Summit Avenue. So, Richard, you can come back up. We'll let you guys settle in. You're welcome to use this front table here. And Richard, we'll have you sworn in first. Yep. So, Andy?
Raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this matter, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name.
Richard Fallon, P-H-E-L-L-Y-N. Thank you.
So, Richard, we're just going to ask you to come up to the proper podium real quick.
Sure.
You can grab a seat just real quick. Well, sorry, in a moment. Yep. Just give us a general sense of what you're here for. You don't need to give us too much detail. You've got a paid expert with you here, so put him to work. But just give us a sense of what you're looking for.
We're here to complete a raised terrace for our property at 246 Summit Ave.
Excellent. That works for me. All right, then. Any questions for the applicant? Appreciate his brevity. No? All right. Excellent. And are there any members of the interested public here for this application? Okay. All right. 30 minutes is looking good, then. So, we're going to swear you in and then you can do the heavy lifting for us.
All right. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this matter, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name.
Lawrence L.A.U.R.A.N.C.E.S.L.A.T.P.E.L. Principal of the Health Design Group Architects.
Thank you.
For Park, New Jersey.
Thank you. Can you briefly describe your background, experience, and three boards you've appeared before recently?
Yes. I hold a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering and a Master's in Architecture. I have a licensed architect in New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania. Men carb certified. My license is valid and in place as we speak. I've been before this board in the past several years ago. I've appeared before numerous surrounding towns. Westfield, Livingston, Milburgh, Short Hills, Maplewood, West Orange.
Any questions from the board? Or would you like to accept his credentials?
Welcome back. We'll accept your credentials. Tell us about this deck, patio, or terrace, whatever terminology you choose today.
So, all of the, everything's in place with regard to all the notices and everything like that. So, I'm assuming I'm here to provide testimony on behalf of Richard Siv, who is the site engineer, who was retained by the Fallons to prepare a plot plan based upon concept drawings that were done prior. So, in addition, I have the site plan prepared by Mr. Siv. There are no architectural drawings, just the site plan. But I did bring some photo exhibits. I'd like to pass these out to the board if possible.
Okay. We'll mark these as A1. And we just want to make sure Stephanie, our board secretary, gets a copy of the course.
Okay. So, these are photo exhibits dated 6/21/23. They're images from Google as well as photos taken by one of my staff architects.
They fairly represent the condition of the property today?
Yes, they do. Am I okay to start while they're being passed out?
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you. So, there are five pages total. This is exhibit A1. I will refer to it later in the testimony. Project is at 256 Summit Avenue. House is in the R25 zone. The first portion of this project was to realign the driveway, which was encroaching on the neighbor to the north. This will be adjusted and the encroachment removed. We understand that this will not trigger any variances, but I wanted to mention because it was part of the application. It also was included on the site plan. The second aspect of this project is a new raised terrace. So, outdoor spaces like this are common in most single-family homes, especially throughout the town in this area. This is even more so common during the pandemic where people spend more time outdoors with guests for outdoor recreation. So, per zoning definitions, the patio is considered a deck. And this is because the height trigger for this is when it's above 12 inches above the adjoining grade. So, in this particular case, because of this, we'd be subject to a 17-foot setback where what is being requested is 10.35 provided at the corner. And this is included and dimensioned at the corner of the site plan, So, the house in question, if you look at the photographs that we have included in the handout in here, is that the house is a walkout basement configuration with the driveway and garage at the rear of the house. So, while the deck is dropped a half a story from the main living space, it is still well above the 12-inch required metric in the ordinance. So, we believe this configuration to be both appropriate and a good compromise with dealing with the special topography. We understand that various other places were originally considered by the design team. There were just no appropriate places around the house because it would impact the driveway. It would just not make sense because your outdoor living space would be connected to the garage and the driveway. So, this seems to be the most appropriate place. In review of the site plan, the proposed terrace is approximately 280 square feet. This is not large. It's not overdeveloped. Per the calculations by Mr. Siv, these are well below the 30% lot coverage that is required in this zone. Also, we believe that this design is both attractive, well-integrated with the architectural design of the house and grading, and it fits in well and looks like it belongs. No other changes are proposed at the time. This is, so the basis for the variance is this is an unusual lot with a tuck-under garage at the rear of the house. Due to this unique configuration, what is proposed, we believe, is a good compromise. The site is reasonable. The height is dropped from the house and setbacks are in excess of 10 feet to this raised terrace from the adjoining property line. Building the terrace in a different location or lowering the height, I believe, would create an undue hardship on the applicant. The relationship to the adjacent house immediately to the left, and this is shown in the photographs, were maintaining over a 10-foot setback. The area of the raised terrace that is encroaching the 17 setback is only 162 square feet. There are existing tree lines. You can see this very clearly on the photos as well as the Google aerial. So, there's an existing tree line and vegetation which provides substantial screening to the neighboring house. This is the neighbor, as you're looking at the front of the house, immediately to the left. Additionally, we understand that the applicant has engaged a landscape company, which is the same firm as the neighbor. And we understand that the idea here is even in addition to the existing landscaping, there are future plans to supplement and increase the landscaping between the properties. We believe that the, that an additional reason why this, we believe that the, supporting the request for the variance is that the proposed structure is not covered or enclosed. It's open, and the patio will not be visible from the front of the house as well from the street. In our professional opinion, we believe that the proposed terrace will not negatively impact the neighbors or the neighborhood, and relief can be granted without any perceived detriment to the public good. That's all I have.
Wonderful. Perhaps Dipthy, if you'd like to jump in, then I've got a couple of questions, but if you want to. So, Dipthy's our board engineer. I just want to make sure that we address any questions or concerns that she noted in that engineer's letter.
Absolutely. Hi, Aria.
Hi.
Yeah. So, there was some discrepancies between the drawings that were provided to us, and I don't want to reiterate the entire document.
The latest one's governed. The latest one by Mr. Siv is the one
That one is the latest one.
Because that was based on updated survey work.
Okay.
And that's what the design was based on. Those were earlier drawings that were provided just to the building department.
I see.
They didn't have the necessary information.
Okay. Yeah. I don't want to reiterate that because I did hear from you previously. So, this boundary and topographic survey that looks like that was from control layouts, is that not the most latest? Or is that also the latest?
So...
Does that show the...
That's the base plan that Mr. Siv used for his block plan.
Okay. So, that's one part of it. And then, so there's a discrepancy of the actual patio area. On the other plans, I know they don't govern per your testimony just now, but it's at 400 square feet. So, the current layout area is less than 300 square feet, the new impervious coverage?
Correct. That's included on Mr. Siv's drawing, and that was some of the things that were added after this process.
Okay.
So, that was part of his engagement.
Is your total impervious increase
Yes, it is.
Okay.
You're questioning for a lot drainage and debris.
Correct. Yeah. So, the net total of 252 square feet on the plan for Mr. Robert Siv is the most recent.
Correct. It's under 300 square feet.
Okay. No problem. Then, you, the proposed walls, are they less than four feet in height or four feet maximum?
I would have to look at the, on the drawings, the, all of the retaining walls in here. So, have to look at bottom wall, top of wall, but it looks like they are all, from what I'm seeing, they look like they're all below four feet.
Okay. We would suggest to put a detail for the walls and show the heights on that.
Is that for the board or just for the building department?
Yeah. For the building department as this project proceeds forward. Because after, above four feet, you would have to provide structural calcs and drawings.
Okay. And, but all of the, all of these are shown on the, all the top wall and bottom wall elevations are indicated. They should be on the drawing you have as well.
Okay. Okay. And then, let's see. I understand that the drainage, sorry, the driveway will go into the grading and the limit of disturbance into the adjacent lot. Has this been discussed with the adjacent lot neighbor owner? Yeah? Okay.
Yeah. We sent him a letter of approval for that.
And then, let's see. Sorry. A lot of it had to do with the discrepancies, so I'm just making sure. I believe that was it? Yep. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Stephen, would you object to the engineer's letter being added as a condition of the application? It just allows us to capture all of her questions at all. Wonderful. Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks, Dipthy.
Okay.
Andy wants to talk about this driveway.
I do. I have a couple of questions. I know our report indicates it's being realigned, and obviously, the encroaching portion is being removed. Are we adding any pavement? Okay. So, it's just removal of that encroaching portion?
When we redo the driveway, we want, we're going to move it two feet over to align with the...
So, previous area that was grass is going to be paved then?
There's no, we're just moving it to move it off our neighbor's property to redo the driveway.
I think, I think the question that you're asking is that because the portion that's removed from the property is, doesn't, it credits the neighbor on impervious cover and not this property?
Well...
Is that, is that where you're going?
No.
Okay.
The reason I'm, because the code requires that any driveway be set back two feet from the side property line. And Krista notes in her memo that it's routinely granted to, you know, these driveway realignments are routinely granted. But if we're talking about additional pavement anywhere, then I think probably the safest way to handle it is treat this as a variance from that two-foot setback standard, just recognizing it so that there's no issue in the future of someone questioning whether that should have been altered in any way if it gets, you know, a slight portion repaved at all.
And this is not to flare the driveway wider. It's just to maintain the current width. The driveway sort of veered off onto the neighbor's property and came back, and this is just to make the, a straight line projection.
So, that, I guess, the middle part, you're describing that veers slightly. It's removing from the neighboring property, but you're adding a slight portion to fill in that gap on this property?
I guess at some time in the future.
Yeah. That, we don't, we're just moving it off our neighbor's property. That was the goal.
So, you're saying it resolves the encroachment, but it adds?
This is showing an additive part.
Okay.
There is some impervious coverage.
If there is slight addition at all, I think the safest bet then is recognize this as a variance from that two-foot requirement. You know, clearly, the removal of an encroachment on the neighboring property is a good thing, but we just want to make it clear in the record that we're granting you that variance from the standard here, that there's no issue in the future.
Gotcha.
Okay. Thank you. That's fine, though. But sorry, for the purpose of the impervious calculation and 300 square feet is a wonderful number to stay under. Are we risking through this realignment the addition of additional impervious coverage that potentially could exceed that 300 square foot figure?
Is that a question?
You don't want to take that one?
I'll pass on the numbers.
Because, yes, good, we're resolving the encroachment. Okay, if we're kind of in the setback, and then we want to know approximately how much additional impervious coverage, and if that exceeds then the 300 square foot threshold. How's your civil engineering chops feeling today?
If I blow it, I'm probably going to say 60, 70 square feet.
Two feet? Is that correct? Two feet? Everything's going to be moved over two feet?
Well, it's two feet, but only for a portion.
Okay.
So, that's why I said is that I took like two feet times about 30, and then in some areas, it's going to be slithering down a little less, so...
I think we're over 300 at that point, aren't we?
Yeah. We would...
Scott says it's 97.
This, it's listed as 97 square feet.
Additional impervious?
Additional asphalt, which fall into impervious.
Oh, was it listed on this?
That was in the board packet, right?
So, what that would do is that would trigger a lot drainage and grading permit?
Though, on the Geller and Siv survey?
It does list the breakdown of your impervious coverage, so that's why I wanted to make sure that was the net total.
Well, is, is the, the lot drainage and grading permit is really the building department, not the board, correct?
Just for the completeness of the resolution, we just need to acknowledge the additional impervious coverage. I, I don't, I'll speak to the board, I don't think they're fined unfavorably to this. We just want to be complete in our assessment.
And I was, I was going to mention is that just to condition that if, if the, if the impervious that is added is in excess of 300 square feet, they would need to file, file that with the building department, correct?
They would, so, but there's a couple of elements to this, I think.
Yeah, so, I guess if there, that's the trigger point for any stormwater management continuation measures and whether those are warranted in this case. Looking at our engineer to weigh in on whether that triggers any, you see any potential issues here that should be addressed.
Yes, so, if you, if you go over the 300, you would have to put in a dry well system or some sort of a capturing system for this additional stormwater runoff. So, using whatever the area is, that turns out to be a 310 square feet, just multiply that usually by three inches of rainfall runoff and you'll get your runoff volume towards the dry well.
Would, because there's such a small increment, would being able to pipe one of the downspouts into the planter bed be an alternative to that? Because part of this is in place and rather than disturb more area, this may be an opportunity to allow water to perp through the, through that planter bed. It's sort of similar...
Similar situation.
End game, just because it's, it's so little, the amount of water.
I feel like Dipty, it is a relatively de minimis addition, but we want to respect the 300 square foot threshold.
Yes.
So, I, I'm, in the past, we've conditioned applications on submission and approval of a stormwater management plan and that doesn't necessarily mean a dry well. It could mean the connection of a downspout into a seepage pit or some existing stormwater management control. But let's not design that tonight. Okay, let's leave it to the professionals to do that kind of outside the...
And, and how would that, would that mean going through the building department or would I go through the...
First through Dipty, yeah. And then with that approval, it should fly right through the building department.
Okay. Okay, perfect.
All right. Thank you. All right, fair enough. Anything else, though, we're missing there in terms of impervious coverage? I don't think we're near a threshold for that, though, in terms of the actual variance or anything. You see a table, I'm sorry.
I, yeah, I don't know what the final impervious coverage number is and I think the testimony was that we're well under, correct?
There's no other variance would be triggered. Okay. Great, excellent. Thank you, Andy. Thank you, Dipty. I think we're up then for questions from the board. Anyone? Got something on your mind?
Always. Well, I mean, I, I, there was testimony about adding landscaping and yes, it is very well landscaped towards one edge mount. Though, you can all, we all go tromping through your backyard, you may not see it. But, but the, the, the house at one edge mount does have a second floor balcony that's clearly visible from your yard and therefore would be looking right at your deck. Have you had a conversation with the neighbors there about their, their take on all of this?
We had for both the weldings and for our neighbors on edge mount, absolutely.
And, and they're in support, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, using the, the same landscape architect was kind of a giveaway, but we want, nice to have it on the record.
Other questions? Jay, anything on your mind over there?
No.
Steve?
Did the design team consider a deck level with the main living floor to, that wouldn't have any setback issues? I know it would come out partially over the driveway, I understand the challenges with that, but is that taken into consideration during this process?
So, part of the issue is that as soon as you start building over that, you're going to end up having columns and the maneuvering here to get a car to, you already have multiple movements without building more driveway. So, I think that would have actually necessitated building more driveway because you would end up having like six movements to... It's actually pulling the car in, that's difficult, pulling the car out's quite easy. But, but, you know, this was, this, this was looked at. It was not looked at, it predated me being involved in this, but I went through the history and we kind of talked about it. I asked a bunch of questions and kind of led, you know, the, the, the same school thought.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Liz?
Okay. I only, just two quick questions, just to build on Claire's thought. Is there any plan to put an oversized sound system or television or chimneys? Anything that could kind of impinge upon the neighbor's enjoyment of the property?
Absolutely.
No? Okay, all right. And then the second was, there was a note from Krista about fall protection, handrails. Is there any plans to put that in place? I understand the building department's going to take a look at that for sure.
Whatever is required by, by the building code is, there's, we're not asking for any relief or, you know, questions, so if a...
But we're not anticipating putting any in place as part of the application?
The, I don't believe they're going to be required by code except at the, except at the stairs.
Okay, so subject to code, code requirement then?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I'll ask again, any members of the interested public here this evening? No? All right. Anything you'd like to say in conclusion?
No, just thank you very much for consideration. It's been a long journey. One of them, Krista and Stephanie, for their support through the process. We bought the house back in September 21. Beautiful house. What we wanted to do, like when we bought it, was the outdoor space for our kids. We have a 15, 13-year-old, so we're excited. It's been a journey.
Awesome.
And a little over a year in process, so we're excited.
Try to bring that journey to a close then. Then, before we enter into deliberations, Andy could just, I think there's two, two conditions that we noted.
Yes, we have our usual compliance with those conditions noted in the board engineer's memorandum. And second is that the applicant will submit a stormwater management plan to the board engineer for review and approval.
Okay. Wonderful. And, and you kind of finesse within the resolution, you would do kind of after the fact, assuming the board approves of the application. Who would like to begin the deliberations? Tom? All right. Thank you.
I, I get the vote tonight, so. I, I, I think it's a very relatively modest application. My one concern coming in, you've addressed. I was happy to see the driveway being realigned, but I was wondering about the square footage and, and so I'm glad we were able to resolve that. The proposed deck, the forester believes it's well screened now. I'm happy to hear you're considering additional screening because I, I think that would be very helpful. And based on some of the other comments you've made, I don't see any adverse impact on the neighbors or joint property. You know, certainly nothing out of character with your neighborhood. So I, I don't see any negative impacts on anybody, so I'm in favor of the application.
You don't care to build on what Tom has noted?
No, I would, I would agree. I think it's a modest, you know, addition to enjoy your backyard space. I appreciate that you talked to the neighbors with the landscaping and using their landscaper because they have a beautiful property that corner, that's very, very nice. And just, you know, because you live on a busy street, you should be outside in your backyard. So I, I would definitely be in favor of this application as well.
I too could support the application. There's some topographical hardship in this, but the lot is well screened today with potential for even improved screening. It is relatively modest, though it looks like it might be teetering over that 300 square foot limit, but we won't hold that against you. And we appreciate the accommodation with respect to the stormwater management plan, knowing that, that hopefully for your pocketbook won't net a dry well, but we know you'll work to do the right thing for the property and Dipty will kind of hold you truthful and honest throughout the whole thing. So with that, and the conditions is noted, do I have a motion to approve the application with the conditions, the two conditions?
So moved.
Second. Claire and Scott, who will vote?
Ms. Noel?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Loykets?
Yes.
Ms. Toad?
Yes.
Mr. Feskins?
Yes.
Mr. Yuko?
Yes.
Chairman Sparr?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. Good luck.
We stayed on target.
Did well. Everyone else take notice, all right? Thank you. All right, next we'll hear 58 Dale Drive, Alexandra and Jason Rosenbaum.
Is that new?
Would you have identical from what?
If it was already covered, okay.
And you have the pictures? Okay. All right, counselor, it's showtime.
All right, good evening. I'm Anthony DeLisandro from Avalino Law in Morristown, New Jersey, on behalf of the property owners Alexandra and Jason Rosenbaum. The homeowners seek to make improvement to the backyard of their home by removing, replacing and expanding a patio to create an outdoor living space that is more conducive to their current lifestyle while keeping with the charm and style of their home. The current 369 square foot patio will be removed and replaced with a 635 square foot patio. We are seeking 1C variance for the left side yard setback varying from 12.3 feet to 14.3 feet, whereas 15 feet is required. The irregular shape of the property is an undue hardship as the left side yard property line veers as it goes towards the right, to the rear property corner. The addition is within the impervious coverage and building coverage permitted. I just wanted to make one note that there is an existing non-conforming condition. On the left side of the house was originally a screened-in porch. The house was built in 1959 and at the time, the existing non-conforming condition met the requirements when built. In 2007, a permit was obtained to convert the screen porch to walls, but no variance was required at that time because it was already enclosed and was already included in the floor area ratio. In terms of the patio and the variance we're seeking here, the patio is designed to blend with the home. It's architecturally appropriate. It's set back appropriately from the street and not even visible from the street. There are no stormwater issues, no detriment to any other properties and there will be appropriate screening, especially as noted by the city forester. Just touch on the criteria needed to approve this application. The positive criteria, the changes are creating an outdoor living space that is more conducive to modern day living, promoting a desirable visual environment and preserving the character of the original home. The proposed patio will blend with the mass scale and architecture of the home. The property is well screened and fenced and the benefits of the deviation outweigh any detriment. The negative criteria, there are no adverse effects on adjoining properties or the city, no damage that would create substantial detriment to the public good. There's no detriment to the neighborhood character. The zoning plan will not be substantially impaired by granting the variance. Yard improvement will not cause any undesirable noise, light, glare, odors or any other burdens and the changes will not negatively impact the surrounding property owners. Now, to touch more on the specifics, I'd like to turn it over to our expert, Harrison Barony, a civil engineer from E2 Project Management LLC.
Any questions from the board for the attorney? No? Any members of the interested public here for this application? All right, we'll hand it over to the next witness.
Thank you. And if you could please raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this matter, is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I did.
Please state your name, spell your last name.
Harrison Barony, B as in Bravo, A-R-A-N-Y.
Thank you. And can you briefly describe your background, experience and three boards you've appeared before recently?
Yes, I have a, my bachelor's from science and engineering from Rutgers University. I've been practicing civil engineering for roughly 10 years now. My license, I do have a New Jersey PE license, it is current and in good standing and I have testified before a few boards in New Jersey, specifically Harding Township and the Township of Morris for planning board and zoning board applications.
Any questions from the board or would you like to accept this credential?
Welcome to summit, you can add summit to that list after tonight.
That's right.
There we go.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, so to start, the plans that I'm going to be showing you today, which you have received and should have in hand are dated December 22, 2022, variance plans. The site in question is the address 58 Dale Drive Summit, block 5605, lot 19, with a lot area of 15,778 square feet or 0.36 acres. The lot, the property is located in the R15 zone, a single-family residential. And we're here, just as Mr. DeLisandro said, for a, requesting a C variance for setbacks for the proposed patio. Per the township ordinance, the patio is considered an accessory structure since it is attached to the dwelling by via steps, which are existing steps. And we are proposing the variance request for a setback of 12.3 feet, whereas 15 feet is required for this accessory structure. If you refer to pay, figure, figure two of our drawing set, if you look at the area shaded in red, that is the existing patio area that is to be removed and that existing patio area is 369 square feet and the hatched area, it looks like diamond-shaped hatched area that is older and black, it will be the new proposed patio area, which has a total area of 635 square feet or an increase in 266 square feet, which is also reflected in the impervious coverage, which we are compliant with still. The impervious coverage, the existing impervious coverage before was 4,025 square feet or 25.5%, which will be increased to 4,291 square feet or 27.2% with the enlargement of the patio. With the proposed construction of the patio, no trees are to be removed, no vegetation is to be removed. The grading of the patio is to be sloped slightly away from the house to promote positive drainage and we are regrading slightly behind the patio so that the water runoff will run off to either side of the property and down the property towards the existing topography. If you're standing at the street for the existing property, you'll notice that it is situated higher from the, the street, roughly 15 or 16 feet. This helps with the screening of the patio in the rear and there's also quite a bit of vegetation in the front, two, two big trees in the front that helps provide some screening. And as well, from the neighbor to the north, lot 20, there is an existing five-foot fence roughly that runs along the side of the site. And what's actually not shown on the survey or the plans, there's actually a number of arborvitaries and trees that are on the other side of that fence, which are on the subject property, which provide a nice screen from the patio from the neighbor. I just wanted to point that out. If you look at our plan figure two as well, you'll notice an orange shaded area, that is your steep slopes area, which we are not enroaching in any of that. Anything considered over 15% slope is considered steep slope. The area which we're proposing these changes, we are not within that area, so we do not trigger variance for steep slopes. Our net increase in impervious coverage, as I was saying before, 266 square feet is less than the threshold of 300 square feet, therefore no stormwater management is required for this site. And we are aware that a lot grading permit will be required since we are disturbing over 600 square feet of the lot. We did receive some professional comments from the engineer and some other professionals as well. I just wanted to address a few of those that were some open items. One of them is in regards to the survey, which was completed in 2021. There was a question about if there was any additional improvements made after the time of the survey. I did walk the site yesterday, there was no significant changes or any changes whatsoever that reflect impervious coverage or would deem a stormwater management plan or just improvements towards the drawing itself is very similar to what it is today. Actually, in fact, there's a few trees that were missing from the survey that help with our, our project, as I said before, with screening. We are aware of the soil erosion fencing, we will comply with that to surround that around the entire limit of disturbance. As I said before, we're, we're aware that we'll need a lot grading permit and there was a question regarding the mechanical equipment or AC units on site. They are actually shown on the survey and they're located on our site plan as well. If you look towards the north corner of the house, they're situated here in the front and they're, they're pretty well screened as well since the site is higher from the street and there is a good amount of vegetation around that you can't really tell that they're there. And they also do comply with the setback requirements. So, that really concludes my, my testimony for the site. Thank you.
Sometimes I feel like we work too hard, but Dipty, what did, what did we miss? Anything?
What I want to say, great job on the drawings. The only comment I had remaining was their proposed inlet filter protection that was shown on Dale Avenue. I believe you would probably need to get city's permission to install any filter protections on inlets that aren't really yours.
Yeah, we would notify the township beforehand and work with them on doing that, yes.
Okay, that's fine. And then there was another call out for an inlet protection, I just saw it actually and it seems like there's no inlet there in the back of the house, so.
Okay, yeah, I didn't see anything back there either, so we'll fix that on the plan.
Yeah, so that's it, thank you.
Would you object to including as a condition of the application, the engineer's letter?
No, no.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from members of the board then? That's good news, we'll take that. And again, I don't see any members of the interested public here to ask questions of the witnesses. I believe he's your only witness for this evening, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Then the only condition that is under consideration is the acceptance of the engineer's letter. Is there anything you'd like to say in conclusion?
No, we just want to say that the, the applicants are just trying to make their backyard more conducive to modern day living and just make their house a better place to listen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Andy, I stole your thunder, I said it was the engineer's letter's the only condition. So, take a break. We'd like to begin deliberations then. Scott? All right, take the low hanging fruit when you see it.
Yeah, it's T-ball.
That's right.
You have the oddly shaped lot, you have the design lining up with the edge of the house and they're creating a space and a shape that's clearly more usable than the existing conditions. I feel like it's an entirely reasonable ask. Work's happening in the backyard away from public view. It's going to improve, you know, the quality and the condition of the enjoyment of the backyard. So with that, I can easily be in favor of this application.
Take notes, more rookie members, this is a veteran jumping in to take a great opportunity. So take the rest of the night off, Scott. Anybody else like to add on to what Scott said? Go ahead, Tom. What did you miss?
Well, not really anything was missed, but just, you know, even though it's a significant increase in the size of the patio, there's no variance needed for the size of the patio. And the setback, side yard setback is really similar to what's there now. So, again, I don't see any negative impacts and no significant concerns either.
That's, that's right. I too could support the application. There's a hardship of sorts with the, the lot line drawing. For the topography, it was good to see kind of the steep slope that encumbers the, in circles frankly, the home and encumbers the lot. There's adequate screening in place today. If you look carefully in the drawings, I believe to that side of the property, there's a 15-foot sanitary sewer easement, I think on the adjoining property, but that adds some additional buffer as well, which is helpful. And I could say the design fits well with the property and the neighborhood. So with that, and the condition is noted, do we have a motion to approve the application?
So moved. A second?
Second.
Everybody? With Liz, I don't know. We have a roll call, Stephanie?
Sure. Ms. Noel?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Loykets?
Yes.
Ms. Toad?
Yes.
Mr. Feskins?
Yes.
Mr. Yuko?
Yes.
Chairman Sparr?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you very much. The weather, weather gets warm and everyone wants a patio, so what's the next, what's the next one? Oh, F A R R, this is a D variance, okay. Let's do it. You know the pictures in, they're shout-outs for their drawing. Yeah, for sure. It doesn't happen very often.
We would D, five of us have to agree.
I guess while we're getting set up, I can swear you in if you'll raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this matter, is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name.
Amanda Kreegan, C-R-E-G-A-N.
Thank you.
Ms. Kreegan, before we get all, you're set with your drawings it looks like, but tell us a little bit about the application and then we'll hear more from the architect.
We are seeking to put an addition on the rear of the house on the existing first floor kitchen and breakfast area and second floor primary bathroom.
Okay. Remove and replace an existing deck, I see, so everybody wants a little outdoor space as well. Yeah? A little bit. Reconfiguring.
So, it's going more, but it needs a year.
Wonderful, cool. Any questions for the applicants?
Actually, just kind of, because, I mean, I see that you're removing sort of the, the ghost walkway, if you will, and side, and exit, or the stoop on the side of the house away from the driveway. I was just curious if you knew the history of the house and how those came to exist? Because with the driveway where it is, it, they just don't seem to go anywhere.
The, the, on the side of the house, I mean, oh, I have no idea.
The, the, on the side of the house, I mean, oh, I have no idea.
Yeah, okay.
I would like to know the answer. I think we're keeping the walkway though.
That's all right. All right, let's move then. I just see one other applicant, so we'll just note for the record, there are no members of the interested public here. If someone sneaks in, we'll give them an opportunity to ask a question. But we'll swear you in, and we can begin the architecture testimony. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give in this matter? Is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name.
Can't really tell, T-O-N-E.
Thank you, and I'll note that you've appeared before us a number of times, including recently. Any changes to your credentials since the last time you were here?
No change.
I assume the board would like to accept you once again. Will accept your credentials. Once again.
So as to the question, we're seeking a floor area ratio variance to...
Mind just sorry moving the microphone over to you? Yep, sorry. Thank you.
We're seeking for a ratio variance for 201.5 square feet. We're adding 266 square feet. Forty-seven of that is on the first floor, and let's see exactly how much is on the second Second floor is 219 square feet. I could do math faster by looking at presenting, I guess. Okay, so the back half of the house, or the back of the house, there's a one-story portion of the house that's an existing breakfast area slash sitting room. And the kitchen is internal of that in the back right corner of the house. The breakfast room is a couple steps down. It stops the, creates sort of an awkward flow between that space and the kitchen. The, at the back of the existing house, these are drawings that you have, the existing, or the part that's middle, this is V3. The area of the existing kitchen is, or the proposed kitchen, is actually currently, the kitchen takes up to about where the island is, and then halfway into the powder room, from the edge of the island to halfway into this current proposed powder room, the breakfast area. And this is the sitting area back here with this line. And then there's two diagonal funky steps over here to bring you down to this other space here. So what it stops you from being able to do is bring the kitchen out to where we have it, because you, the chairs would essentially fall off the step. So the back of the space here has a bay window here, that's what this angled line is. And then there's this covered entry. There's this, it's a first floor addition, but the back of the house drops off, so there's a rear garage tucked under. So there's an entry into the house underneath this piece. So we're maintaining that piece there and squaring off the back of this addition and creating a larger breakfast area and with a small area for a sitting room, because part of the first floor family room is on the other side of the house. So it does communicate very well with the kitchen. So one of the things we're trying to do is improve the family space and give one space where they can all hang out together. And in addition to doing that, we want to actually get the door to the powder room onto the hallway and not directly into the kitchen. The deck at the back is currently, I mean, it just needs to be replaced. It's sort of got this weird angled railing on part of it that almost looks more like a boat than a deck. And a built-in bench around it, and I think it's not really that safe. I mean, I think a few nails away from a dangerous situation. So on the second floor, we are adding over top of the existing, or the addition that we're adding on the first floor, it's really over the breakfast area and not over the piece that we're adding on this side here. We're adding a larger primary bathroom and two closets in part of the area of the existing bathroom. The existing bathroom is, the house stops here now, and this is in four, right here. And these two closets are taking up the space of the current bathroom. Right now, those are about five and a half feet wide inside. It's a really hard bathroom to navigate. And so we're adding space over the room behind it. The current closet is in the front now. We're going to move that to the back, which is also more desirable, and give them a small space for an office, for a sitting room, access to offer the master bedroom. So this is the 219 square feet, and on the first floor, it was, it was the 47 square feet, which comprises the floor area ratio variance. Part of the other things I would like to note about the house is there's a lot of space in this house that's circulation. The foyer is huge. For this size house, the foyer is pretty big. It's almost bigger than the breakfast room itself. And some of the things that are causing a floor area ratio variance are the redundant spaces for family rooms where you want to have something that's accessed off of the kitchen and where the family can gather and communicate and spend time together. The redundancy of spaces increases the need for the floor area and the size of the foyer, which is part of the character of the house. So those are really the main reasons, I think, that we're actually over by a monster amount. In addition to that, I can walk you through the exterior. We, the exterior of the house, there are really no changes to the front of the house. The addition is completely behind. This is the second floor addition, then first floor addition is the deck back here. We're improving the deck steps down, making them safer, changing the rail to a normal rail that actually suits the style of the house. The rear of the house, it's on the side here, you can see. We kept the addition, two stories in a similar mass to the current house, where it's just a simple gable. The house has very simple roof lines. We didn't want to sort of create a lot of intricate roof lines back there. So the second floor pretty much aligns over the first floor, with the exception of that one, one sort of piece that, because we're dealing with floor area, we wouldn't want to over add here. So, but as far as, in the narrative that we had submitted, there were reasons for granting relief, the positive criteria, the no-borrow enhancement for the house, the proposed exterior building materials roof lines, we blend with the mass scale and architectural style of the building, most of the additional foyer, and the addition is located over an existing portion of the structure, and the rear addition conforms to all the setback requirements. No trees are affected by the addition at the rear of the house. All the proposed changes enhance the dining function of the home. And satisfaction of the negative criteria is that the variances for the proposed, that actually doesn't make any sense. Let's just skip that. The variance can be granted without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the ordinance. The proposed design of the breakfast room addition, new deck, and primary bathroom and closet has no adverse effect on the adjoining properties, the neighborhood, or the city of Summit. There is no change to the use of the property, no damage to the character of the neighborhood as to constitute substantial detriment to the public good. There's no detriment to the neighborhood, character, utility, or value. Granting of these variance causes no impairment of the zone plan and the ordinance. The proposed addition does not significantly change the perception of the overall size of the house or the density of the neighborhood. The addition will not cause any undesirable noise like glare or odors or any other burdens on the joining neighborhood, on the neighborhood. We feel the board can grant this variance without tittering.
Any questions? We'll go to you, Dipty. It's not an engineering-heavy application. Anything you want to flag, or?
I would suggest to add top and bottom of wall elevations. I believe your wall was only like three feet high max. Yes, that's it.
I couldn't hear the question. What was it?
It was a suggestion to add top and bottom of wall elevations, because it was only three feet high per the plans, but just to add those elevations on the plans.
Would you object to...
Nothing else.
Okay, with respect to the engineer's letter, would you object to including it as a condition of the application? Okay. Thank you, Dipty. Anyone have any questions from the board? No? No, but no grilling? Let it off this season? Fair enough. I don't have really, I have myself too for a D variance. We'll get into deliberation shortly, but it's tucked in back and relatively small, and doesn't appear to have any real negative impact for the neighboring properties. But, great. Anything you'd like to say in conclusion, then? We're not going to overwork it tonight for you. Such is good.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay, excellent. So the only condition is noted would be the engineer's letter. I know, Andy, sometimes for D variances, you want a little more oomph in the resolution. Is there any aspect that you'd like to explore?
Nope. All the testimony that was provided gave me sufficient evidence, so.
All right. Andy will sleep well tonight, then. Who would like to begin the deliberations?
Well, if Scott's off, I'm going to try to fake my way through this one. I can certainly support this architecturally. It unifies kind of chopped up back of the house, certainly adds safety in terms of the deck. And also by removing steps down to the family room, or the breakfast area, it makes that part of the house more accessible. If you're not going to age, you have aging parents, so at some point, that becomes an issue. But it does not affect the character of the house. It's that the neighbors aren't going to notice it. It's certainly not going to affect the neighborhood. It doesn't affect the floor area ratio, but as a board, we tend to like it when you remove unnecessary impervious coverage on the lot. So that's, that's kind of nice. And for all these, and for reasons Scott would say if he were talking, I can support this application.
Well, I saw you scratching notes. Anything missed?
No, I don't think anything was missed. I second everything Claire said. There's no impairment of the neighborhood. The massing is in line with what's around and doesn't go above and beyond, and isn't scale. The additions are modest, and it increases the functional use of what's already there. And it will be functional for, you know, your family now and future families, because this seems to be more in line with how we use our homes nowadays. So yes, to Claire's point, aging parents, if you age in the home, you'll enjoy it before you, 15 years from now. But, you know, if you're a small kid, they will enjoy it as they don't fall down a bunch of stairs. So I think this is, it's practical, and I would support this application.
Tom or Liz, anything you'd like to add?
No.
No?
I'm also off the hook for the rest of the night.
Borderline. Scott jumped into it. It's the enthusiasm that really, you know, caught my attention.
You can speak to this one, too, if you want.
If you've got something to say, you're welcome to say, but kick your feet up otherwise. I too could support the application. As Claire did note, the building, if you look at it as a percentage, is the building and lot coverages are still under. So as an FAR, an FAR-only variance is being requested. So it's a question of how the floor area is being distributed among the property and where the additional floor area is being distributed. And this design is intended, I would say, to really hide any potential negative impact. So I'm sure you tried to eliminate the, that little de minimis percentage to the best of your ability and still meet, you know, the desires of the applicant. But I think this is a very reasonable, a very reasonable request, and again, one that I could endorse. So with that, and the condition is noted, do we have a motion to approve the application? So moved. A second?
Second.
Okay. A roll call?
Sure. Ms. Noel?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Loykis?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
Mr. Feskins?
Yes.
Mr. Yuko?
Yes.
Chairman Spur?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right. Good luck with your project. Thank you very much. We're going to keep the momentum going, Mr. Rosen. And I have to say, I worked awfully hard to find this application material in my pile of applications, so let's make it, make it count. This is 28 Druid Hill. So first, we'll hear from Stephen just briefly. We're going to swear you in, and then we'll let Mr. Rosen do all the heavy lifting. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give in this matter? Is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Please state your name, spell your last name.
Stephen Thompson, T-H-O-N-E.
Thank you. Just also a little bit about the application, what you're here for, and then Mr. Rosen will lend a hand.
Yes, we're seeking to hear approval for an addition and renovation of our kitchen at first floor. It's a very unfunctional first floor with a drop-down first-use garage where the house was first built that's been changed into a family room. We're trying to bring that up to be level with the kitchen and just make it a much more usable space for young kids, basically.
Excellent. I'll note that there are no members of the interested public here for any application. So thank you for your patience. Were there any questions for the applicant before we jump into the architecture? Okay. Andy, will you swear, Mr. Rosen? Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give in this matter? Is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name, spell your last name.
Kate Rosen, R-O-S-E-N, Parker, Rosen, Kelly Conway, Architect.
Thank you. And noting for the record, you've appeared before us a number of times, also very recently. Any changes to your credentials since the last time?
Nope, everything good.
I imagine the board would like to accept you once again. We will, we'll accept your credentials.
Thank you.
On the screen, you can see the picture of the, of the house, 28 Druid Hill Road. It is, it's a very sort of symmetrical looking central part, but the part on the right continues that idea, but the part on the left does not. The part on the left of the house was originally, I think, a garage, and the spaces within that are down a few steps, and the ceiling comes down. On the second floor, the floor drops down, and as noted in the project narrative, you have to go through a bedroom, through a doorway, down some steps, and so on, to get to the little space that had it within that small dormer. We are here to renovate that space and some addition on the house in the back in order to, to bring the house up to sort of more current standards and make it more usable. We're here for two variances. The first variance is a combined side yard variance. And currently, it is required in the R15 zone to be 35 percent. It's 33.3. When the last renovation on this house was done, when the garage, the original garage was enclosed and a new garage was added in the back left corner of the property, the requirement at that time was 33 percent. Krista says that it was originally 33 percent. I don't even know what the requirement, or if one existed in 1928 when this house was built. I didn't think there were combined side yard requirements. But in any case, most, the most recent renovations on this house, it was supposed to be 33 percent. It is 33.3. Whether that's a coincidence or whatever, that's what it is. We are not changing that, but we will be doing an addition on the left side of the house, which has a slight impact, because the roof over that part, we will be raising the ridge slightly. The bedrooms that we're putting up there will be set back from the side so that they will be totally conforming. But there's a little bit of roof line that will require a variance on the, on the left side of the house for the combined side yard. Now, it's 20.3 feet on that side. So the single side yard over there conforms, obviously, the other side is the one that's a little bit small at 13, but we're not doing anything on the right side of the house. So we need a variance for a slight tweak to the house, which, so the existing nonconformance continues, 33.3 percent instead of 35. The second variance is for floor area ratio, and there are a few factors on that. 25 percent is the required or the allowable limit. We're at 27.8. And the reason for that is that we want the house to look like it, like it belongs. So this is the way that the house is currently, and then on this drawing, you can see, you can see that in the upper drawing. In the lower drawing, you can see that the dormer on the left side has gotten a little bit bigger. The window is bigger so that it meets egress requirements. It does a variety of things. You can also see that the roof line on that piece on the left wraps around, and that's where there's a setback of about 20 inches or so, which makes it, makes the bedroom itself set back in a compliant way. But we did change the roof line slightly. We also enclosed, I'll just, I could, I could point, I guess, with the, so on the existing, in this area, there's a little front porch, which is really mostly an access to get into the, into the kitchen area. We're enclosing that. So there's a little sliver of space here on that front porch that is enclosed. So that's a part of that side yard, et cetera. that is enclosed, so that's a part of that side yard setback variance. The floor area ratio is for a variety of things. There is about half of the overage on floor area ratio is in the attic up here. It's about 290 square feet of space in the attic. Most of that is existing. There's a little bit that's added. But the additions are in the back of the house, and the reason for the floor area ratio variance, there are a few things. One is that we're trying to work with the architecture of the house. We're trying to make the spaces that will work well on first floor and second floor. And the other thing is that the basement is limited. It's a smaller, it's a small basement. The, from the slab to the underside of the first floor choice is six feet, eight inches. There are a lot of pipes and ducts and other things that hang down, and so the basement, in most houses that would look like this in Summit, there is a real usable basement. There isn't here because of the, where the bedrock is, and it is very difficult and expensive to try and remove that rock with a house in the way. So if we can, in the little bit of addition in the back to make the family room, we may be able to dig underneath there, but that may be optimistic. We'll see where the, where the bedrock is under there. So there's sort of like an extra room on the first floor. I can show you the floor plan on that one. So on this first floor plan, there is a little bit, there's this room in the back, which at one point had been a porch. This is sort of the entrance in the center, living room on this side, and then an office, and then a porch. We're keeping that as a playroom. That would normally be in the basement, but with the rock sort of squeezing it so that there's, there's limited headspace in the basement, we're keeping that as a playroom. This line shows the current exterior of the house. We're expanding this to make the family room. We're taking this area that was formerly garage, and currently the kitchen extends partway into that, the ceiling changes. We're making that into a real space, and we're moving the dining room from this area in the back to the front. So there's a more classic layout. If you come in the front door, living room to the right, dining room to the left, and then the various other rooms sort of behind that. So we are trying to work with the house and do something that improves the appearance of the house from the street. The property, as John Linson noted, is very well screened, so there isn't really an issue for the neighbors. The addition on the left side of the house improves the appearance. Now, there's this window is the same size as most of the other windows on that second floor and gives a better balance, I think, overall. The rest of the addition is at the back, essentially invisible from the neighbors. And so, so again, these variances, combined side yard setback, it's the existing condition, and we did, we made sure that we set back the actual second floor addition when we enlarged this dormer on the left side here. That dormer is compliant, same thing in the back. It's just really the little bit of roof line that are noncompliant. And the floor area ratio is due to the way that the house was originally built and our desire to work with the existing house and not try and shrink it all over. There were a couple of comments that I wanted to address. Krista mentioned these couple things about the 33 and a half percent, which was the requirement at some time in the past, and she also mentions an air conditioning condenser. We'll be fine with that. There are two condensers. They will probably stay. If we add one, it's really probably going to be replacing one, and if we did need to add one, it would be compliant. And then on the engineering report, there were two comments. One was in the engineer's report, item eight, and the other one is item nine. In item eight, we have two statistics for the increase in building coverage, which is compliant. Building coverage, lot coverage, all compliant, but there was a question about two statistics. One was saying that the addition is 275 square feet, but the overall, the net increase is 220. It's just that there are areas outside the house, landings and steps, that we're building on top of, so the addition is 275, but the net difference is 220. And then the last thing was about the lot coverage. There was, it said that we would have, our application had mistakenly said we were going to have a decrease of 11 square feet in lot coverage. It's actually an increase. Those two numbers were put in the wrong columns. So again, it's compliant at 33.8 percent for lot coverage as opposed to 35 allowable. And the reason that our lot coverage is so small, the additional 11 square feet, is because we're building out onto existing patio, and there is sufficient patio remaining, so we don't need to add to that.
So I'll pause for a moment here and see if there are any questions. Dipd, anything you'd like to follow up on? Good catch on that, is 11 square feet. That was good.
No, I don't have anything further. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Thompson, would you find it acceptable to include the engineer's letter as a condition of the application? Okay, thank you. Any questions? Yep, Tom?
Yeah, I have a question. You know, with FAR, for me, anyway, it's always a question of, when is it too much? I mean, you know, so, and the last application was a smaller increase. This is a pretty significant increase going from 24 percent to 27.8 percent. And I get that most of it's in the back and not going to be visible, and it's screened and all that, but I'm just wondering, how much thought did you and the applicant give to, you know, should we be asking for this much? Can't we do something smaller that would be not so much of a variance, you know, given, given, there does seem to be flexibility here that you could have gone smaller if you wanted to.
Yeah, mostly it's, it's within the existing footprint with the exception of the addition at the back of the house. And because of the uniqueness of this property, where it's really well screened, that putting the addition in the back means that it doesn't change sort of the impression of the house. It doesn't change the, the relationship of the house to the street when you go by it and so on. We did add some space to the front, as I discussed. On that dormer got a little bit bigger. We enclosed a little porch that's maybe 10 feet wide and about three and a half feet deep. We enclosed that. The idea was to leave the original house pretty much as it is and not try and pull back in other areas and get the rooms to work properly. This is, people may move and so on, but I think that this is a house that they.
That it's staying here forever, yeah.
Yeah, that this is, this is a kind of thing where it will, this house will work really well for them now and for decades to come, presumably. So we did look at, and we've discussed a variety of things, but we felt that overall, this was the right thing to do. The usual test is whether the property can sustain the additional development, and here, I think it can, as shown by the fact that building coverage and lot coverage are both compliant and that lot coverage, we only increased by 11 square feet because we're building on the area that has already been developed. And we really did consider whether we should go to more extensive measures to try and cut out the bedrock underneath and make more space in the basement, but it's really a significant challenge on this property because with the house in the way, you just can't get the machinery there to do it, and it's not like it's dirt where you could even hand dig it. This is the rock itself. So for a variety of reasons, and as I mentioned, there's about half of it, 290 square feet, so about half of the increase, and most, it's almost two-thirds of the variance itself is in the attic. We didn't add dormers to make the house feel more substantial up above. We put everything on the first and second floor. So I think that the property can sustain the additional development. I think that the house can do it. I think the neighborhood can, and the fact that so little of it is visible, and the part that is visible is essentially only from the street, and the house looks more, more consistent now than, with the addition than it does in its, in its current condition.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
What's the current use and the planned use for the attic?
Well, it's just, is it, do you have storage up there?
It's just a storage space. It's unfinished.
It's unfinished?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
So I do like what is being proposed, and I do think it adds to the functionality of it, and I had a really silly question as to like where the chimney went in the first picture and the second picture, but that's not relevant.
The fireplace is removed. That was like a little den, and it's, it's, it's a crummy-looking thing?
That's, that's a tragedy, and I would suggest considering those like cool, you know, dual-sided fireplaces. It's like, it's really add to your, but no, that's not my question, so I'll take it back.
It's also below floor level because it's at, anyway, go ahead.
Like, okay, so, so yes, don't consider that. No, I, so you've mentioned that the bedrock issue and then digging it out and from the back, and again, that's, that's not really a problem, but is there any intent or consideration that if you were to begin construction and, I know the area, I know that you're probably not going to hit anything that isn't Jersey Summit clay, but if you were to find some sort of gold mine of just good dirt that you could dig out, is there any intention to, I guess, lower the basement so that it is functional and increasing your space down there? And I don't even know if it would matter to our discussion if you could do that, but if there, like circumstances allowed for it, is that something that you would consider and is that something that we should consider as a board in making a determination?
Did you get out your pitchfork and try to, or pickaxe, I guess, and try to get through the bedrock?
We have not analyzed that, but there's a limited basement space in there. It's only 6'8". They, I think that it was originally just, the whole thing was just sort of storage and mechanical because of the way the ducts and the pipes and everything are sort of put there as if nobody is meant to really walk there. In the gym, the so-called gym, in the one space, in one space, the beam, there's a beam in there or a drop thing, and that is at 5'10". And so there are real significant limitations there. I think that they would have gone a little bit deeper if they could. It's not a house that was built with real strict economy in mind, and in 1928, as opposed to, say, two years later, in 1928, people were much more enthusiastic. If it could have been done, I just suspect it might have been done. Two years later, in the Depression, people saved money all over the place. You see houses where the trim is much less, the basement is shallower, and they just saved money because they, that was a wise thing to do. But the scale of the house and the way that it feels, it's circumstantial, but it feels to me like if they could have done it, they probably would. So, and in answer to your question, if we were to find out that this part of that ridge that goes up to Oak Ridge Avenue, if this part had a pocket of good soil, we would probably consider excavating that one room, that gym, but to go under the whole rest of the house is not financially feasible. I mean, it would add hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to a project that is probably higher than what they had expected initially.
I mean, that fireplace is looking much, much, much more feasible, right? No, okay, that answers my question. It's both very informative also from a historical perspective, so thank you.
Good detective work. I like that. Any other questions for Mr. Rosen? No? Okay, so we're good on engineering. The board is good. Anything else you'd like to add before we hand it over to the applicant?
Thank you very much.
And thank you, everybody, thanks.
For hanging in here with us. Anything, Mr. Thompson, you'd like to say anything?
Thank you for the time. Appreciate it.
Okay, wonderful. And then Andy, I think just one condition for the application.
Just the one compliance with conditions noted in the board engineer's memorandum.
Okay, of course. All right, this is the last applicant of the evening. Who'd like to begin a deliberation? Jay, you want to take a swing at it?
Sure, considering I actually don't have the packets, it's carried over from before my time. So, you know, Tom's point about the square footage, I think, is a, is a very valid point. The design intent here, I think, comes collectively very nicely together. I think you're delivering a product that not only fits the elements of what this neighborhood looks like and feels like, but functionally what your family can utilize. The reason I asked the question about the attic is you pointed that out more than once, and I think if that ever were to change, you'd be back in front of us discussing it. So based on what's proposed, I'm in full support.
Awesome. Anyone care to, Tom?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I, I'm going to reluctantly somewhat support this. I mean, I, you know, Mr. Rosen makes a very convincing case why this kind of variance is appropriate in this case. You know, I'm not sure where I would have drawn the line on this. I came really close on this one, but it's a very attractive project. It is hidden from the public. It is, you know, it's not, it is well screened. It's not, you know, going to be, it's not out of character with the neighborhood, so I will support it.
Anyone else care to add to this? Scott, I can take you off the bench. Go ahead. Back in.
I understand what you're saying, Tom, in terms of the percentages. For me, though, they're taking a good house and they're getting a much better house without expanding the footprint, right? It's an infill project for all intents and purposes, and, you know, providing significant improvement without significantly expanding the presence of the house on the site. I think if every applicant came to us with that accomplished, then I think our job would be a lot easier. So having said that, I'm very much in favor of this.
I too could support the application. There's notable aesthetic improvements. It's being, as Scott and Tom approach, acknowledged, it's being addressed in a way that minimizes any potential negative impact to surrounding properties, given kind of the infill nature of it. The property is very well screened. The lot can, in my opinion, accommodate not just the FAR, but potentially a larger footprint, so there's an appropriate balance being struck here. And then I'd like to see this in the resolution that there's a geologic hardship that we're accommodating for. Not just a topographic one, but I like your sleuthing, Mr. Rosen, and do presume there's ample bedrock there that's underlying that foundation. So, geologic hardship. Thank you. I could support the applicant, in quotes.
Patent pending.
Patent pending, that's right. And I, for that, I could support the application. Do we have a motion to approve the application with the condition is noted?
I'll move to approve.
Thank you, Tom. Second?
Second.
Scott, you have a roll call, please?
Sure. Ms. Newell?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Loykets?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
Mr. Feskins?
Yes.
Mr. Uco?
Yes.
Chairman Sparr?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Thank you, Mr. Rosen. Have a good evening.
Appreciate your time and all, and the.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you both.
And the manner in which you guide the applicants through this.
Good. Good luck with your project. Many years of hope, happy enjoyment, we hope. All right, we've got a little bit of administrative work, a couple resolutions, and then one set of minutes. So Stephanie, over to you.
Sure. So we have 7 Linda Lane, which is ZB-232180. It's block 4710, lot 10. The eligible voting members are Chairman Sparr, Ms. Newell, Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Malley, Mr. Loykets, Ms. Toth, and Ms. Sager. Can I have a motion? Luykens, Ms. Toth, and Ms. Sager. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Newell?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Luykens?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
Chairman Sparr?
Yes.
The motion carries. The next one we have is 104 Woodland Avenue. That's ZB-23-2179, block 1203, lot 26. The eligible voting members are Chairman Sparr, Ms. Newell, Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Malley, Mr. Luykens, Ms. Toth, and Ms. Sager.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Newell?
Yes.
Who's the motion on that? That was Liz?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Luykens?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
Chairman Sparr?
Yes.
The motion carries. The last resolution we have is 709 Springfield Avenue. That's ZB-22-2159, block 1702, lot 49. The eligible voting members are Chairman Sparr, Ms. Newell, Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Malley, Mr. Luykens, Ms. Toth, and Ms. Sager. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Hi. Ms. Newell?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Luykens?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
Chairman Sparr?
Yes.
The motion carries. Next, we have the minutes. They are from June 5, 2023. We'll do a voice vote, but we're going to exclude those who were absent that evening, which were Ms. Toth, Ms. Sager, Mr. Feskins, and Mr. Uco. Can we, can we have a motion? So moved. I'm sorry, so that was Ms. Newell? Yes, and a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. The motion carries.
With that, we are adjourned to July 6.
Four applications, hour and a half. Wow.
That's amazing.
That's the last speed record.
That's right.